All right, and now call the meeting to order at six oh one P M on March fourth, two thousand twenty-one, Dunsmere City Council. If we could, um, let's see.
It'd be my honor.
Would you lead us in the flag salute?
Let Big Dave do it.
Okay. We can all do it.
It'd be my honor.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice for all.
For all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Um, let's move on to a roll call. Uh, Wendy, we do a roll call?
Yeah. Councilmember Art.
Here.
Councilmember Deutsch. I she, I see is absent.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, councilmember Kessler.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Lucchese.
Present.
And Mayor Brian.
Present.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we now move to item three, special presentations and announcements. Um, and we have none scheduled for today. That leads us into item four, which is a general public comment. As it shows on the screen, um, any member of the public can address that is not on the agenda or is not on the consent agenda tonight. Sorry, or is on consent agenda tonight. So each speaker will be allowed three minutes to make their statement. Um, you can present your questions, but it won't be a two-way back and forth. If you could please give your name and address at the beginning of it for the clerk to put down. And, um, if you wish to raise your hand or wish to make a public comment, go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand function. Or if you're on a phone, you can hit star nine and it'll achieve the same, uh, raise your hand function.
We do have Ahmet Tasi.
All right. Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Tasi.
Uh, hi. Good evening, everyone. This is Ahmet Tasi. I live on four zero one nine, uh, Forest Lane. Uh, I wanted to talk about, uh, about, uh, Mott, uh, Mott property at the airport. I, I had a really good meeting with, uh, our city manager, Todd. And, uh, we were talking about the possible, uh, development ideas at the, at the Mott, uh, property. Actually, he, he came up with, uh, much better idea, uh, to build some, uh, housing and also, uh, 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 sorry about that. I forgot. Uh, Business Development Center. Uh, so, so, uh, according to him, uh, the Dunsmere could be a perfect candidate to, to get some grants, uh, from the Economic Development Administration to at least, uh, build the, some of the infrastructure up there. I, I hope, uh, he can have a chance to comment on this because, uh, his expertise can tell us a lot. What kind of financial, uh, financing, uh, opportunities, uh, we might have up there. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Tasi. We appreciate that, that input. Uh, is there any additional public comment at this time?
We have, uh, Tim Holt.
Uh, yes, Mr. Holt.
Uh, actually, it's Sandra. Can, uh, my husband and I share the, um, screen. I, I'm just asking, as the president of Dunsmere Railroad Days, uh, we met just recently and we're wondering how the city feels about events be, uh, happening in Dunsmere. Typically Railroad Days is the second weekend in June. Is there a possibility that, uh, we will be in a situation that we could actually hold the event this year in the city? Um, I know we're still in the purple for Siskiyou County. I just wanted to, uh, put that out there and, um, have a comment back at some point in time, uh, how the city feels about having events because obviously we use the, um, um, you know, city property for it. And if you need my address, it's six two three five Hill Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Are there any additional public comments?
I do not see any other hands raised or items in the chat.
Right. Uh, seeing none, then I will close public comment. Uh, thank you so much for, for that. Um, both are exciting. The prospect of development added mod and, um, we certainly all hope and pray we can get back to Railroad Days sooner rather than later. And, uh, we'll have to address that in coming meetings. Thank you. So, um, I'd like to move into a council and staff comments and, uh, city manager, you has, would you like to begin?
Sure. Um, a couple of things. The, um, I have been working with U P and we've got an invoice that came from them that I've been trying to, you know, kind of decipher. It looks like, um, after a long discussion with U P today, they have finished their structural engineering review of the plans that we sent them and they're assembling them and we should see something back next week, which is good. Then we can move on to the next process, uh, depending upon what they have to say. And I can certainly provide, uh, counsel an update once, um, you know, I hear more and.
We're talking about the Mossbury Trail?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, so there's that. Uh, the other piece that I think is pretty exciting is, well, actually, I'd like to address, uh, Mr. Tasi's comments. We, we did have a great discussion for about an hour or so. Um, again, this is just in the early planning phase, but we've got a forest service well at the bottom of Mott Field that, um, you know, if, you know, at one point, the, um, fire service wanted to sell it to the city. Uh, it's a, it's a really strong well. It has a lot of pressure. Uh, the idea would be to, you know, it's a, it's a very extensive federal grant, but we, I, I would, I'd bet dollars to donuts, I would bet about ninety percent that if we put in a good application, we are so in the sweet spot for the Economic Development Administration in terms of being a, um, a lower income community and something that could produce an awful lot of jobs to, uh, apply to bring sewer and water up to that eleven point seven acre parcel. And what I use as an example, and folks that may want to take a look at this, uh, Freeport Maine is what I'd like to use as an example. I mean, there are other things that could happen up there. Freeport Maine is a development that, uh, includes housing and commercial and high-end, uh, outlets like, you know, uh, um, like crusade, like, um, uh, you know, icebreaker clothing, um, you know, bows, that kind of thing. But there are restaurants, really high-end restaurants and, and, you know, moderate level restaurants and, you know, everything you need for a full community. And by making this shovel ready and, uh, bringing sewer and water up there. And if we potentially could swing with the E D A and even say lay down east-west streets, then sign a, uh, you know, a desk, uh, development agreement with somebody that was willing to come in, they build the east-west streets. Then, you know, we might be able to pull something off like this. And, and the other is, uh, we're much more attractive for a hub for like FedEx or UPS or, or some other venture, but you know, their opportunities are, uh, endless. Um, once you have something that allows developers to pencil up, to create a development that will pencil up at that site. So more on this later as we kind of, um, dig through the details and we'll bring it back. Uh, finally, one big, good piece of news. It, uh, it isn't official yet. Um, you're, I imagine a lot of you are tracking the, uh, stimulus package that's working its way. It's made its way through the House. It's with Senate. Uh, they're in votorama right now and, um, which is, you know, the attempt to just filibuster this thing to death. Uh, but it will, we've got the votes, we'll, we'll pass it. And one of the elements that will not get stripped out is aid to, uh, you know, not only larger cities, but what they call, um, uh, you know, other than, uh, other than cities, and that includes Dunsmere. They've released a, an Excel spreadsheet that explains based on sense, current census information, exactly how much each municipality, whether it's a town, village, uh, unincorporated area, uh, what you will receive. And Dunsmere is, uh, to receive upon passage two hundred and ninety-four thousand and change for lost revenue related to everything from T O T, T U T, lost, uh, property tax revenue, people that haven't been paying their utility bills, anything that we can find a nexus to. That could also include economic development, uh, for a community that has lost businesses. So there's a lot of ways to work this. And one of the, the, um, the elements of this package that's really exciting is that once you're awarded this money, there is no, uh, timeframe when this sun sets. So if we decide, which I think is a good idea, to hold on to some of this money in case we face COVID spikes and, you know, a year or two down the road, we have it as part of our rainy day fund, but, uh, it adds, uh, absolutely needed dollars to our coffers, uh, you know, on top of the good news that despite the pandemic, our T O T, T U T and property tax revenues are up. And that's what I got.
Q. City manager. Are there any questions for city manager regarding his report? All right. Uh, thank you so much. That sounds like, uh, wonderful news. Finance director, are you? Is Blake on the call?
Buddy.
Oh, hey, Blake.
Howdy. I just, just wanted to say thank you to the council members. Uh, I got some signatures from y'all. And so I just wanted to thank you, uh, for being available for that. That was in regards to the whole bond document for the big water main project. So just, uh, update theirs that we're moving forward and things are, things are progressing very nicely.
Thank you. Um, and it looks like, uh, Sam Kubowitz.
I'm here.
Sheriff's office is here. Do you want to give a report?
Yeah, uh, I actually really have, don't have much to report on other than we're still, uh, actively pursuing this case in Dunsmere. And we're looking out for people that, um, were in the area or, um, could help out and provide us with some more information. I know it's been a, a topic. I've been fielding a bunch of calls about it. I know that there was a press release issued by the, uh, attorney and, uh, we're just looking for a little bit more help and a little more eyes and some better statements.
I, um, for anyone listening, in case they weren't filled in on this, uh, what case are you referring to?
Uh, the Gregor, Craigery Olson case on Dunsmere Avenue.
Thank you. Um, and then where, where should people call if they have any information?
They can contact Sergeant Moser. He's our detective sergeant or Detective Machado. Um, the easiest phone number to get ahold of us at is five three zero eight four one two nine zero zero. And that's our dispatch line. And anybody that calls in can be, um, either, uh, transferred to their phones or their voicemails, uh, so they can get in contact later if they're on, on duty.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hey, Sam, uh, uh, um, I was hoping to get a report on the hours and the, the statistics. Will you have those at the next meeting for us?
Yes, I will. I, uh, I've got the statistics for the, uh, I was actually going to bring that up at the next meeting for, uh, where we're at in the contract period regarding the percentage. And I'm still waiting on some hours coming in from some deputies for the exact hours for Dunsmere, um, for the month of February. So it takes a couple of days for me to compute all that stuff. And then, uh, with our report system, it's, uh, it takes a couple of days and some hours sitting at a computer to decipher all the, uh, Dunsmere inside city limit calls and reports.
Okay. Thank you.
We look forward to that at the next meeting. Also, uh, I think we spoke of this last time. We are coming up, um, for our quarterly meeting with the sheriff. If you could, um, essentially work with us and setting up a meeting, um, I guess our city manager will be reaching out to, um, the sheriff for that, um, in the upcoming month.
Okay. Do you, do you want that in the month of March, this month or, uh, April?
Considering we missed January, probably good to get it done in the month, month of March.
Okay. I'll, uh, I'll email him and, uh, and I'll talk with Todd and we'll try to come up with a good date.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
No problem.
All right. Uh, Wendy, do you have any, uh, staff report?
Nothing from me.
All right. Thank you. And then, um, uh, if there's no more staff reports, um, we can move on to councilman comment. Uh, Councilman Art, would you like to begin?
Happy to, Mr. Mayor, colleagues and members of the public. I have two items. One is to follow up on the minutes that we haven't approved yet from our last meeting, but we did have a very good discussion around economic development and if all goes well, there will be several new businesses opening in Dunsmere this month. The business owners live in Mount Chasta, but they believe in Dunsmere. And I think it adds emphasis to the need and the priority for the city to engage both old members of the business community or seasoned members. Nothing ages. And new members of the business community that are taking a chance on Dunsmere to talk about COVID, how we reopen in the months ahead, to talk about empty and abandoned buildings that hurt the vitality of our economy, to talk about loans and grants and ways that the city could support the new businesses. So I really hope for the listening session we talked about at our last meeting, we will come up with a date or dates and a format. So whether you're new to the Dunsmere business community or a seasoned member, you'll show up and we can have a good discussion about what benefits our community. The other item regards the airport and we'll talk about it more when we get to the agenda item on the annual audit. But I came very close to investing in coastal Maine rather than Dunsmere, California. I've been to Freeport Maine. And for those of you that have never been to Maine, it is remarkable how much it resembles Siskiyou County and the far north of California. Independent, resilient, smart people that want to make a difference in their community. So I appreciate the meeting between Ahmet and Todd. And I really hope we can turn our airport from a liability into an asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Uh, Councilwoman Lucchese?
Thank you. Actually, on the airport, um, just to let everybody know, um, next week, um, we're going to be having, uh, Carol, um, or, um, Keith, uh, come up, uh, and talk about some airport, airport-related programming. Uh, the, I had a really good conversation with Carol in preparation for our airport committee meeting, which we will have after, um, Carol and Keith come up next. Um, there are a number of grants that are opening up for the airport and, and we have a really strong chance of getting the additional funding to do more work at the airport without a match. So we're working on, on those aspects at this point, um, to be able to continue to do improvements to the aprons, to continue to do improvements to the taxiing areas and make sure that that's up to speed. Um, so that's going to be really exciting, having them coming into town next week. Hopefully being able to go out to the airport and take a look at a couple of different major projects that can be funded through those, excuse me, um, grants. Um, and then, like I said before, we'll be posting a meeting for the airport committee and I'll be working with Manya to notify all of the pilots and leaseholders, um, so that we can have that meeting post, uh, probably third week of March, so that we can go over some of the future programming and then the scheduling for the programming this year, which would be the, um, runway project. Um, other than that, I have just been super busy with other things. I do not have anything else to report.
Uh, thank you so much, Councilwoman Lucchese. Um, Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Yeah. I got a few things. The first thing I'd like to do is, um, if anybody's interested in getting the shot, the vaccine, here's the phone number. Five three zero nine six four two three eight nine. Text your name, your birth date and Dunsmere. And you're automatically added to the list. You'll get a text back confirming. Again, that's five three zero nine six four two three eight nine. I'll make sure that this number is also available on our website for everybody down the road. And I encourage everybody, please call, sign up and just, um, they're at the, I'm sixty-one and they're not at me yet. They're at sixty-three and four yet. So they're coming, they're coming my way. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Councilman Kaiser.
I, I'm not done. I, I got, uh, I got a couple of other things. I want to put Sandra Hood and Tim Holt and I know the rest of the committee, all the committees. Jim Powell, all you guys. I'm going to put you to rest in one thing, that later on this evening in this meeting, I will be asking that on the next meeting, we can be discussing the possibility of events, Railroad Days, steampunk, the music, that Brew Fest, all of it. Um, but we have to discuss it on an agendized item at the meeting and it'll be at the next one. Um, there's something else I heard through the grapevine that, uh, that Ahmed Tasi dude, he, he might be having some jobs coming up at the cornerstone. I, he didn't mention it at public comment, but I'm thinking that, uh, um, if anybody's interested, uh, Dylan posted that they're going to be hiring and that's great news for local people. And, uh, thank them for that. And once again, it's the Dunsmere Rotary Club. It's the golf scramble. And I have these sponsorship papers. It's fifty dollars to get a T sign with your name or your business. And we put it up at the golf tournament that's happening April fourth at the Lake Shastina Golf Resort. Um, we had fifty T signs last year. Some people are buying too. Hit, hit Peter. Uh, anyway, uh, so it's that time again. And all this money goes to support the Dunsmere Clubs Weekend Backpacker Program for our kids. And, uh, it's, uh, uh, that to me is worth every penny spent. So, um, there's also, if you guys want to play golf, there's ways to be on the teams, get ahold of any of us Rotarians and we could tell you the right people to get ahold of. This is a good thing and I encourage everybody that has a business or I know a couple of people that do it in memory of their dad. It's all for our kids. So thank you. And I encourage everybody to participate in the program. And the last thing is, Todd, I want to thank you and commend you and everybody else who is participating in getting us this far forward in the progress with the Mossbury Trail. I think that the Mossbury Falls Trail is going to be one of the biggest things that and the ideas of the airport coming into fruition are going to be what's going to save this, this whole town. So, um, thank you. And, uh, get ahold of me for your golf. It's fifty bucks for a T sign. So, thanks.
All right. Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Kaiser. Um, for myself, um, I just, I'd just like to, um, echo Big Dave's thoughts about us beginning to need to plan for events and opening. Um, you know, I'm very cautious about that, but at the same time, um, you know, we do need to prepare for the summer that may be coming our way, um, whether we plan for it or not. Um, I would like to say, because I've received a, a great number of emails and letters regarding, uh, something called the Soda Springs Timber Harvest Plan um, that I'm beginning to research it. Um, most of the letters I've received are against it. I'm urging the city to look into uh, opposing this timber harvest plan for fire safety, but, um, I'm looking into it and I'm going to hopefully get our fire chiefs input on it as well as a Caltrans representative. Hopefully to give us some more info.
You mean Calfire?
Calfire. Sorry, not Caltrans. Calfire, because I believe they're the ultimate body, um, approving this. Uh, we have no real say in it to educate people. Um, but that we should look into it. And, um, if there are elements of it that are a great concern to us as a community, that we can at least voice our concerns, um, to Calfire and to the companies harvesting the timber. Um, and then lastly, uh, since our last meeting, uh, Blake kind of hinted at this. Um, I'd just like to thank all the people that have worked on our infrastructure improvement over the last twelve years. I, as mayor, was given the honor of signing as well as many other people involved with it, um, signing off on our loan for close to eight million dollars. And we're receiving a grant for close to three million dollars, which brings us to, you know, and we've, we've announced it before, but it really is monumental to actually be having a shovel in the ground on this project, eleven million dollars of water improvements in our city. Um, what we're doing is just absolutely monumental in the context of Dunsmere's infrastructure. It was just ignored and patched as best as possible uh, for the last hundred years prior to now. So, um, I just want to congratulate all the people involved. Some of them are here tonight. Some of them are no longer with us, but, um, it feels really good to be making such huge strides, uh, in some of the areas of Dunsmere and just wanted to congratulate everyone and let them know that we're fully moving forward on that. Uh, next, let's move on to committee reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, I noticed that, uh, former council member and vice mayor Rubino is on the call and is one of my comrades to start the item you just addressed. Uh, I hope he gets a chance to speak.
Um, I, I certainly hope, hope he does. Um, and I, I hope that the press will cover this. Um, I believe they're interested in running the story on it. So, um, I'd like everyone to let everyone know that there's an achievement there.
I'm just saying he's on the call and he's muted.
Oh, um, well, it's, it's not technically a public comment time, uh, Councilman Art. But I.
He is treasurer though, Mr. Mayor.
He is the treasurer. Um, all right. Uh, Treasurer Rubino, would you like to speak?
Mute me. Hello?
Hello? Hello?
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry. I missed the question. What was the question?
Um, it was suggested that you maybe had some comments, but, uh, we're just thanking you as well as all the others that have worked on the water infrastructure in the last twelve years, uh, bringing us to.
Oh. Oh, yeah. Um, I, uh, uh, don't have any comments, uh, on, on that, but thank you very much.
Thank you. And you put a lot of work into that. All right. Um, let's move on to committee reports. Uh, speaking of water sewer, um, I believe the water sewer rate study ad hoc, uh, has a scheduled update at least. Yeah. Blake? Blake, are you there?
Let me get him.
Yeah, unmute him.
Okay.
Okay, Blake. Did you?
Yeah. Definitely. Yeah. So this is just a quick update. Uh, we kind of wanted to give a, a brief update saying that we had, uh, the rate study met once. We posted for citizen participation. We hadn't gotten much, uh, but we, in fact, I, I believe, uh, there has been two, um, summinals. I haven't seen them yet. So, um, but I, but we are looking for two citizen members and I think we have them, but they haven't come to council yet. Uh, so just reporting on that. And then also we will be meeting on the tenth. And we're going to move forward, um, with the rate study.
Yeah, what time?
At four, four P M.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Mayor, while we're on the same tu, the same subject, Blake, did you attend the, um, Airbnb, uh, the rental, what's it called? Short-term rental? Me.
Uh, I was there for the beginning part, yes.
Did you take any notes for me?
Did I?
Saying I got a new puppy and it ate my homework. Well, it didn't eat it, but I sure can't read it.
Saying I got a new puppy and it ate my homework. Well, it didn't eat it, but I sure can't read it.
We, we haven't had the next meeting. It's on the second Tuesday.
Were we reporting on the last meeting that we had? Did we report on one?
Oh, we did, yes. The last city council meeting.
I just was making sure that we reported on it. I don't remember. All right.
Yeah, no, 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 no worries. Yeah, we did report on it briefly. It was incredibly informative and we kind of went over our draft rules and went over what was involved there. We haven't gotten really into the details yet in terms of how we we see guiding it better and changes we'd like to make, but we're, we have been given assignment for our next meeting is coming up. It will be on March ninth.
At what time?
At, I believe, six P M. And there should be a link to it on the city website coming up here shortly.
Thank you. Like I said, I lost a whole stack of papers. Wasn't my fault.
No, no worries. All right. Thank you for remembering that, Big Dave. Were there any other committees that met?
Councilmember Art has had his hand up.
Sorry, Councilmember Art?
Well, I just wondered as far as the water sewer rate study ad hoc committee from my time on the finance committee, I know that remedying the problem with the two hundred phantom accounts on the sewer side, that that was a priority for pace and obviously a priority for the city. And we'll get to that with the enterprise funds later in the agenda, but do we have a timeline for fixing the sewer rate problem?
And didn't the finance committee meet?
Yeah, I'm gonna report on that next, Dave, but I believe Councilmember Art had a separate question.
Yeah, so Peter, the plan right now is to, I mean, the going plan is to try and get rates established by July one. So we're moving toward that goal. It's probably at a fifty, fifty chance right now, but that's definitely our hope is to try and get the new rates by July one, but there's a lot to be done.
Thank you.
Okay, we did have a finance committee meeting on Monday. And the finance committee basically continued, we had taken two meetings to talk about mid-year budget adjustments. So we ended up going through our second round of mid-year budget adjustments and we approved a set of recommendations for city council adoption. So that'll come to the next meeting for city council consideration. Most of that pertaining to a couple of changes in just this fiscal year. So we did not touch the second fiscal year. But we will be reviewing that second fiscal year projection.
Go to initiatives in the kind of task bar in the top, and you'll find it, Community Promotions Funding.
Thank you. Were there any other committees that have anything to report during that time? All right. Thank you. We can move forward into approval of the minutes for February eighteenth meeting.
I believe Peter had a question.
Yes, Councilman Art?
No question. Happy to move the minutes.
All right, motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Against? Motion carries. All right, let's move forward into item eight, the consent agenda. We have the check registry for February thirteenth through February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, an S B nine opposition letter.
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion at hand? See none. I'll move into a roll call vote. Councilman Art?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lukeysey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
Myself is also an aye. With Councilman Deutsch being absent, the consent agenda is approved. Item nine is public hearing. We have no public hearing this evening. So that moves us to item ten. Again, we have no old business. We were very efficient at our last meeting. So brings us to item eleven, new business. Let's begin with item A.
Really quick. City Planner Tinsman is not going to be available until seven o'clock today due to other meetings. So could he move past item A until he's arrived?
I make a motion that we take item A and bump it down beyond E, which would make it A, B, C, D, E, F, A, F.
Or if you'd like, I can run you through it. We had a very, very similar item on the last council agenda. It's up to you guys.
Okay, yeah, if you, if you feel comfortable doing it, I just know that Rico won't be here till seven.
Yeah.
I'm cool with that.
Okay, yeah.
You may remember at the last council meeting, Rico talked us through connections to, from a property in the county adjacent to the, the city of Dunsmere's boundary to water and sewer, and it is something that these connections were prepaid. And, you know, we had asked recently, we have another gentleman has come forward from the same subdivision. It's actually four parcels. There's a residence on one parcel that actually already has sewer and water hooked up. He has three additional properties that he would like to have hooked up. It would involve a new force main being installed on South First Street and he would have to go through the LAFCO process for approval, but from my end, you know, we can certainly handle this volume or we're very well able to and anybody that's connecting to our services and doing everything the right way, I think is a good thing for our bottom line. So that's it in a nutshell.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions regarding this item?
I have, I only have one. And I compliment the staff on the memorandum. I thought it was very good. My only question is is the city's infrastructure, that is the water mains and the sewer mains already extended to these parcels? Or does the city have to extend its infrastructure to service the parcels?
It's extended, it, it, you know, it's basically bridging, you know, a couple of feet. It's there, you know, it was planned for quite a while ago when the subdivision was built, but the folks that own these parcels weren't ready to build and never got through LAFCO.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding this item?
I, I, I kind of do. I believe that the bottom line is when it's all said and done, we're going to have four places that people could be able to rent.
Actually, to, I, from my understanding, this is where Rico could come in. I believe that the guy who owns these four parcels, he's got a residence built on them. He recently put these three parcels on the market and they were snapped up, like, you know, within a matter of forty-eight hours.
They appear to be right on the river.
Yep. Who wouldn't snap them up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions. He's going in line with, I believe, Councilwoman Lukeysey's concerns. Last time we reviewed something like this. Is the, is there a provision in there that ensures that if we ever move to annex South Dunsmere? That they can't, you know, in exchange for getting the services, they can't oppose it? But I also wanted to go a step further and wonder how it would work. If there were a vote of people down there, would they be an automatic four or just merely they wouldn't have the right to vote against?
They would be an automatic four and that is in the LAFCO application for out of. So when they go to LAFCO, they'll be required to sign off on that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Then my, my other question is, one of the three lots, the one to the north, based on the map. I, I'm not exactly sure what the county's building setbacks are, but it's hard to imagine fitting any sort of structure there that would need water and sewer. So I guess that's one thing that confuses me a little bit, but there must be enough to make it worthwhile.
Tiny house.
Very narrow strip of land.
Tiny house.
Yes.
Yeah.
That, so what I've learned as I've gotten older is to embrace the power of, I don't know. So, as opposed to fudging it, so when Rico gets on, that may be, you know, that, that's one thing that, you know, be good for him to answer.
All right, yeah, I don't know. I didn't measure it. It just looks really thin. I've driven by there. It's maybe you could squeeze a house in there. Of a rectangular variety.
The trend is people are lowering their square footages.
True. Well, is, I believe the, the motion would be for us to approve this?
Yes, that is what's recommended on page thirteen.
Okay. Let me open up the item for public comment. First, if anyone has any public comment regarding the proposed out of service area agreement for these three A P Ns down on South First Street, raise your hand in the participants tab.
I do not have any hands raised and I don't have any chats.
Okay, see none on our closed public comment.
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, thank you.
I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero four, approving the extension of water and wastewater services to A P N as oh, three, oh, dash, three, one, oh, dash, two, two, zero, dash, two, four, zero, and two, five, zero. And that we direct staff to submit an application to LAFCO for an out of area service agreement to address Mr. Dolph's request.
All right, motion and a second. Wendy, can we move into a roll call vote?
Councilmember Art?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lukeysey?
Aye.
Mayor Brian?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, let's move on to item B. A very large topic of discussion, solid waste R F P response discussion. City manager?
Yeah, so I struggled with putting this just on staff comments, but I figured because it is big, I'll put it on new business. I just wanted to say that we're not going to get into detail on this tonight. Is that the R F P process is closed. We received two responses. And one of the responses, there are fourteen pages of deletions in terms of what we were looking for responses on and changes to the language. And what we need and I'm working on right now is working through those deletions and whether they're substantive. And some are, some are, and I want to come back with one or two page, probably a two-page sheet that lists those deletions for the respondent. And basically comes back with an apples-to-apples comparison of what it would cost for the service that we're receiving now. The cost for anything additional that is, will be required by the state of California and when it was phased in. And then a menu of items and their cost, you know, related to things like green waste. You know, or other things and what that would, what those would also cost to determine what is a palatable amount for our citizens to have that passed along. So really, the full discussion starts next week, but I don't think it's, it's digestible unless I put together those couple of pages and lay out the big points and actually the numbers so we can, you know, make the discussion a little bit easier, even though it's, it's a, it's a pretty big piece to chew.
All right, thank you so much. Other questions for city manager?
I think, you know, just, just doing a, a review of both of the proposals so far. It would be really, really helpful for me when you put together a staff report for this, for the next meeting, that, you know, the different services that we had requested in our R F P are kind of probed for. That there's like maybe a heading for that, maybe just a discussion how either one proposes to meet that service. I know looking at the proposals, like I can kind of parcel out, you know, what they can and cannot do or what the costs of those are. But it might be presented a little bit more clearly to be able to see, you know, which, which pieces are on there.
You'll be surprised.
Agreed. Yep, there are some things that were changed that were head scratchers to me. And I consider them borderline non-responsive.
There you go.
Okay, but yeah, I, I took a look at the proposals as well. It's, there's a lot to compare there and thank you for kind of taking on the brunt of it and distilling it into its pure form so we can compare them accurately. Are there any more questions regarding the solid waste R F P?
Councilmember Art has his hand up.
Councilmember Art?
Not a question, but a comment.
Proceed.
The, the comment is like other infrastructure issues, solid waste has been long overdue for an update by the city of Dunsmere. And so I compliment the staff and the council for taking this on with the notion there are significant parts of our community that care about recycling. They care about waste disposal. And for all of us that live in Dunsmere, the discussion that's going on between insurers and property owners about the fire risks and how unattractive Southern Siskiyou County can be to fire insurers. I think maybe the right thing to do, and this is just me thinking about it, is to try to reach closure with a successful service provider for the basic core of disposal services. And save for our visioning and planning mid-year. What do the citizens want and what are they willing to pay for for these other services? So we get the discussion going and perhaps can put out R F Ps for what I consider the ancillary services. And I told the mayor offline, I'm happy to work with the state of California, California Recycles and the whole ambit of forest management and fire safety. Because this isn't optional for our community. We need to be advocates and we need to be problem solvers. The only thing I'm hoping for, for twenty twenty-one is that we have at least two free disposal days. Big Dave was at the successful ones we had last year. So was I. So are members of our Disaster Recovery Committee, but we have to help our citizens in the area of economical and appropriate waste disposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Art. All right, is there further discussion of this item?
I, I think. Looking forward to what you bring back.
If I could add to that, I've been, I've got a time that, or I'm trying to set up a time with Mike Delabana and Linda Shaven. We're talking about looking at the way, I guess, things were done in the past where there were five-dollar coupons for loads of green waste haul to to the transfer station or ways that we can get at these green waste days and try to minimize costs for the city. So that's, that, that meeting's going to happen next week and we're, we're already working on it and talking about it.
Thank you. All right, so this is just a discussion. I think we can close item B at this time. Looking forward to the report. Let's move forward to item C, audit acceptance discussion. Let's move forward to item C audit acceptance discussion. Is this something that Chairwoman of the Finance Committee would like to introduce?
Yeah, I'll leave it to Blake.
Yeah, thanks for unmuting me, Juliana. Alright, so the audit is here before you. We're on page twenty six of the agenda packet. My staff report, just going through it, just looking to accept and file from the council. But some of the background is that each year, of course, the city's financials do need to get audited by an independent person. And so that person is a guy named Charlie, Charlie Pimmel. So he has come and. His opinion of the final statements are that they are quote unquote presented fairly, which is the standard thing for auditors. And. So he's gone over this with Finance Committee. The, the previous addition of the Finance Committee he presented to, and then the new addition of Finance Committee. We have discussed this, I think, at two, two meetings. And the Finance Committee has made their recommendation. It was unanimously voted on to. Recommend to council that that council approved. But getting into the weeds a little bit. The main, main points that I wanted to bring up are. Of course, the finding, so there was one finding out of the audit, which is finding twenty twenty dash zero zero one. That material audit adjustments were proposed because monthly and annual statement close and reporting are not being completed. Which could lead to. Which could affect the the reported financials. And so the, the kind of the fix for that is just increased training, which Charlie and I are scheduled or we have scheduled. And so Charlie and I can be working on that and focusing on it. But real quick, just kind of like a, a general idea of those things is. Like for instance, our water, our big water project coming up, the revenue and expenditure is one side. The balance sheet is is another side. And so reporting our money in, money out and from the banks and then our money out. And then establishing that in terms of our liabilities. So we have assets and liabilities that live on the balance sheet and we have revenue expenditure that lives on the, of course, revenue expenditure reports. And so to show those revenue and expenditures, because we're, we're paying our contractors, so that's an expenditure. We have revenues coming in as, as essentially either a grant revenue or revenue from. It's not really revenue technically because it's coming from the bank, so that in essence will get transferred to a liability. So all of that, if you didn't quite follow it, it's okay. The bottom line is that we show on the revenue expenditure reports that, that things are happening there. But then need to move to the balance sheet. Because these big major projects are gonna in essence become assets. So all of the improvements will become infrastructure. That's, that's an asset. So in any case, that's just one example of what, of what it means by monthly and annual statement close and reporting. So that deals with that finding. Then kind of subsequent to the audit, Charlie has, has discussed with Finance Committee and the public, of course, that. He's got a few other bullet points that, that I've kind of talked about here and spell that. So the loan committee should meet more frequently. And so that's a essential piece. The other bullet point is that there is an upcoming lease reporting change. So there's a federal entity called the GASB governmental accounting standards board. And they issue findings or they issue these. Statements, the GASB statements. And so there's a change coming up to our whole, to the whole lease structure. And the, and how it gets reported on financials. So it's a, it's a big change. We have quite a few leases. So that's going to be something to really research. Next point is, is talking about procurement policies. Procurement is basically purchasing, so, so buying things, what, what the city buys. And then the last piece that I wanted to touch on is assessments and there are two assessments. Or special assessments, I should say. And those deal with our South Dunsmere Sewer and the Fire Department. And so just getting a private vendor to really delve into those situations and those special assessments. So we're, we've been looking into that. I think at this point. That is about what I have.
Do you want to speak briefly on the airport that was brought up by Councilman Art earlier?
I probably, I'm assuming what Art's referring to is. The amount that the airport owes the general fund. And so what council has decided is to have that amount incur interest on it. And so come, come six thirty twenty one, we'll, we'll figure out what the airport owes the general fund. And then place that interest rate on it and add that on to the amount that the airport owes the general fund.
Councilman Art, does that answer the issue you were bringing up?
Well. Only a peripheral sense. On page thirty three. And page forty nine of the agenda. It shows a negative figure of eighty one thousand five hundred ninety four dollars. That are owed from the airport fund to the general fund. The other figure is ninety thousand dollars, four hundred, ninety thousand, four hundred and fifty six dollars. And my questions are. When is the payback of those funds going to occur? And. What Charlie has pointed out repeatedly is the airport enterprise fund jeopardizes the general fund. To the extent the airport fund operates as a deficit, the only place to make up that deficit. Is the general fund. So I call this the kick the can down the road. Enterprise fund. Is there going to be a serious effort at creating go forward budgets for the next two or three years? That resolve the problem of deficit, deficit, deficit.
Yeah, I, I do want to remind everyone that this is the audit of eighteen nineteen. No, sorry, this is nineteen twenty. So what we're in right now, twenty twenty one, we've already made some strides when it comes to budgeting for the airport. And it should actually not incur more debt this year at least. Not that we've solved the problem. I think, you know, the, the core issue still stands that. We're not quite at solvency yet for any operational plan. But to remind everyone that it's not commenting on where we currently are, we've already increased some of our planning. When it comes to cutting expenses relative to the airport.
I mean, the, the, the part that is buried in the details of the budget is as an asset. Apparently, and I've never been to the airport, I never examined. The improvements to the airport, but what I'm told is as good as the runways may be. The other structures that the city are responsible for, the hangars primarily, they're not in good shape. And it, it just sort of. Makes me sad that the city manager is spending his valuable time. Trying to fix this problem. I really need, I think we need to step up. In our efforts to take on the last of our infrastructure problems.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Do you have any, while you're on the floor, any other comments, questions regarding the audit?
I'm, I'm a little disappointed that Charlie isn't with us tonight. If Charlie was here, I had two questions. One is that. For my time working with the city council, it seems to be a standard part of the annual audit. That Charlie points out, there is supposed to be a management discussion and analysis. He raises this on page two of his report and. I've always wondered why our city doesn't do that. What is the purpose of the management discussion and analysis? Isn't important and should the city be doing it?
Thank you, Councilman Art.
Is that it?
If you have more comments or questions.
Well, the other is when you and I were on the Finance Committee and we received Charlie's comments. On the original audit, one of his recommendations. Was that the council needs to be more involved in managing the budget. Specifically for transparency purposes and for better communication. With the people and businesses we represent, the budget tends to not come up on our agendas. And I thought Charlie's recommendation was that we have a standing agenda item once a month. Where the budget is there for our staff to let us know what's going well. And what's not going well and that that information would be available to the public as well. Did I mishear that or was that his recommendation?
No, that certainly was along the lines of his recommendation that he'd recommend doing it as much as monthly and certainly not just twice a year. I, I think that's for the, you know, maybe we didn't communicate that with the switch in leadership at the Finance Committee. I'm sure the committee can take up that recommendation and it sounds like we're already getting our mid-year recommendations coming at the next meeting. But perhaps Finance Committee could look into a more regular review of changes.
I'd like to hear a recommendation from the Finance Committee at our next meeting. Because I strongly support it and I'm happy to make the motion to do so. Thank you.
So we're not going to be meeting until April, so we won't have a recommendation on that particular item or a discussion until an April meeting.
That's fine, but especially with COVID, I think it's extremely important.
Yeah, and the other thing too, going with what Charlie was saying, if I recall correctly. Us moving to a two-year budget has been wonderful in that we don't have a looming full-scale budget that we need to prepare in order to. You know, prove any sort of expenditure and revenue, but. We do need to be more diligent about updating it along the way, so we don't have this once a year, you know, complete restructuring. But I think it'd be a useful discussion for Finance Committee to just go over with the city manager and finance director and. Come up with whether maybe monthly is too much, maybe at least minimum, you know, four times a year.
There is a request for public comment, so if you open this for public comment.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding the audit for Blake at this point, though? Alright, thank you, Blake. Let's open this up to public comment. Oh yes, Mr. Tassi.
Well, we have Mario Rubino requested first. So Mario, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Treasure Rubino.
Hello, am I on? Hello? Okay, there we go. As having sat with Charlie over. Several years and that we've had him and previous. Auditors. The budget process is a work product. Between the city of Dunsmere and the auditor and I'm proud to endorse both their work. As I, Charlie has said, he feels that. So on that news, you know.
Don't know what you did, Mario, but you messed your voice up.
Hello?
There you are.
Jeez, so. Anyway, it's a work, the audit is a work product of the auditor and the city of Dunsmere. And as he said, it's fairly and adequately stated per federal standards. In that regard, there has been statements that the city of Dunsmere has not. Been adequate in its representations of its finances. Those have been untrue. And that's why I keep reiterating this. Secondly. It is most certainly the Finance Committee's job to be interfacing in depth. With the financial manager and the city manager on the budget. Obviously quarterly is, is. Pretty much adequately as far as the time that would be allowed for. Our financial manager to prepare, but also it's the most adequate data that we receive. The sources that are the input or data input. Honestly. We have through the audit. Corrections that are being proposed to council at the next meeting. We've been able to amend the budget. And correct a lot of deficiencies. And that was over. Six months, but it was about three or four meetings, financial meetings to, to clarify and to come up with solutions. Once and again, there's some difference here, but in most general law city governments. The. Budget belongs to the city manager who is our paid professional, our. Extremely well-paid and supposedly knowledgeable manager.
Hey Mario, that's your three minute time.
And let me just add, and financial managers duty. Now I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Treasure Rubino. I believe we have one more public comment. Mr. Tassi, you have your hand raised again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Amit Tassi, four zero one nine, horse lane. I just want to talk about one of the finding of the auditor, as Blake mentioned, more training. I was wondering how often these trainings would be because. To be honest with you, when I look at the last five, six years, maybe more of the audits, we always have this problem in the findings. Or, or finance director or is, is not knowledgeable enough on certain areas. And I'm wondering how Finance Committee is planning to solve this problem. Perhaps maybe more mentoring on a monthly basis instead of quarterly or yearly. Perhaps some part of the finance could be outsourced. On, on, on watch of Blake. I'm, I'm not sure, but, but it really, it's really important. To minimize all the issues that we have on the audit, on, on, on the financial statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tassi. Appreciate that. And thank you, Treasure Rubino as well. Are there any more people wishing to make public comment?
I do not have any other hands or requests in the chat.
Right, thank you gentlemen for sharing your, your thoughts. Very much appreciated. Let's move forward. Is, is there any further discussion? I see that item C is presented as audit acceptance discussion.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Were we supposed to make a motion to accept the audit at this point?
Motion to accept and file the audit for fiscal year ending six thirty twenty twenty.
A second.
Alright, a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion at hand?
I just wanted to cover really quick, just Amit Tassi's public comment. So what we discussed for training with Blake. Is that instead of paying for a multi-day, multi-week, which we. Know when they're going to start doing those trainings in person again, training for Blake, what we're going to do is we have Charlie on call. Now so that if something does come up and Blake does need some guidance or advice on that, he is able to reach out to Charlie and get hands-on learning with Charlie. When that situation occurs. So that's how we're tackling the training portion for Blake this year. We feel that that's going to be a better. We feel that that's going to be a better mentorship opportunity and may actually correct some of the education needs for Blake that Charlie sees.
And just to add one piece to that, you know, part of the reason of choosing Charlie over going to outside training is we're a little bit concerned that if we went to outside training, some of it would be redundant in terms of what Blake's, you know, knowledge set is. So we'd be paying for an awful lot of time that would be more expensive than paying Charlie to be more targeted and focused on, you know, he's spent years on this budget and he knows the, the areas where Blake needs more training so we can really target his lessons to those, those areas. Thank you.
I think, and then is that just on an as-needed basis or is it just going to be scheduled as time allows throughout the year?
I believe it's as needed.
As needed.
Okay. All right. There's any more discussion?
Roll call vote.
All right, let's move into a roll call.
Councilmember Art.
I.
Councilmember Keisler.
Hi.
Councilwoman Lukeyezy.
Hi.
Mayor Brian.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Let's move into item D. Proposed termination of Rod and Gun Club release due to non-responsive during contract negotiations. Is that meant to be a lease?
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so going through this, we've got an original agreement with the Rod and Gun Club that was signed in October of 2008 that essentially rents that space up at the airport to the Rod and Gun Club for $5 a year. And, you know, it's, it's a token amount and, you know, it's, it's kind of a moot point. We haven't seen that, that payment. Not a real big deal. We've actually had since then an additional extension of the lease. And, you know, coming in here and trying to find out ways that we can work to make the airport enterprise fund solvent, you know, trying to get to the point of a monthly lease rate based on the examination of their finances annually. And what we think is, is a reasonable amount for a monthly rent. And basically I also called other gun ranges, Wayrica, Bunny Flats, and Bernie Gun Club. And so having great conversations, working with the president of the gun club and essentially they, the gun club decided to move the negotiations to an attorney. And so John Kenny and his attorney are supposed to be negotiating. I've made several calls to this person. He called me back once and John has been having a hard time getting this guy to call him back at one discussion with them. And, and it seems to be a ratio of eight calls to one response. So we just, I want in my back of my pocket, yes, their attorney continues to be non-responsive to eventually just send them a lease with the, the range, the range that I've discussed with them. You know, or, you know, along with an addition to the contract that says if they choose to leave the site, that they return it reasonably to the condition they found. And in other words, clean up their debt. Or we move towards giving them 30 days written notice towards terminating the lease if we don't have a response from your attorney.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any questions regarding proposed termination of Rod and Gun Club lease from counselors?
I, I have one. Todd, as much as anyone's familiar with the current lease, does it obligate the Dunsborough Rod and Gun Club to carry any kind of insurance? If so, what are the areas of coverage and the limits of liability?
It does. Again, I'm going to go back to my statement about not, if I don't know, not saying I, I had it. I just, I can't, I can't pull it off. Maybe it's early senility at this moment, but I can get back to you on that. But they do.
Thank you.
They do carry general liability.
And it's current?
It's current.
All right, are there any other questions regarding this? I see none. I'm going to open it up to public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment on item D, proposed termination of the Rod and Gun Club lease, please raise your hand or message us in the chat function.
Is there any member of the Rod and Gun Club listening that wants to raise their hand and speak up?
No, we don't have any hands and I don't believe we have any members on the call.
Unbelievable.
All right, seeing that, I will now close public comment on this item. Let's move forward with discussion of the item.
I'm fine moving forward with giving the city manager the ability to terminate if it's not going in a, in a timely manner. We've been working for them for how long now? About a year and a half on this?
And, you know, and I just want to reiterate that the, the point is not to drag them out of business. They're a valuable resource. I'm a member myself, not that that matters, but we just, we, you know, if, if, right now it appears with your attorney that they're negotiating in bad faith in terms of just stretching it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last second, Juliana's motion, if that was a motion.
Well, sure, I'll motion to grant city manager the right to terminate the Dunsborough Rod and Gun Club lease should the club's attorney refuse to communicate in a timely manner.
And a second.
And I'll define timely manner in those circumstances, 30, 30 calendar days.
I second that.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion at hand? See none. Wendy, could we move into another roll call vote?
Yeah, here. Councilmember Art.
I.
Councilmember Keisler.
Hi.
Councilwoman Lukeyezy.
Hi.
Mayor Brian.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, let's move forward into item E, our last item under new business. Budget amendment to allow for use of previously allocated $25,000 for completion of Department of Water Resources grant for UV treatment of water supply near our source.
Okay, so this is basically in 2019, there was a council passed a budget amendment to, for $25,000 to write a grant to the Department of Drinking Water, if I got that right, Division of Drinking Water, sorry, for a grant to see if we can, instead of catastrophic failure, having to add chlorine to the best water on earth, instead to replace or to, instead of chlorine, adding a UV treatment at the source that, and, you know, at that time, the Department of, Division of Drinking Water had said that they were ready to take applications. And then the then director kind of put a hold on taking those applications for an unknown reason. Now there, we've gotten an indication with the change in leadership that they are now ready. So we're just seeking a budget amendment in which we're you know, putting in this fiscal year, that $25,000 you apply for that same grant.
Thank you. Any questions of city manager regarding this item? Seeing none? Or sorry, Councilwoman Lukeyezy?
No, I just said no, we're good.
Okay. I'll open this up for public comment. Anyone would like to make a public comment, same as before, go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand button or hit star nine. I don't see any.
I do not.
All right. All right, see nobody stepping forward with public comment. I will close the public comment on item E.
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right. Ready to make a motion?
If there's no further discussion, I like the motion to allocate the 25,000 towards the UV disinfection grant.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second.
It's a good thing.
Discussion of the motion at hand.
I'm guessing if the citizens of Dunsborough were forced to drink chlorinated water, they would hang us all in the town square.
Yeah. I'm not gonna mess with that.
Rightfully so.
$25,000 is pretty darn cheap.
All right, and it might be paid for by the grant eventually anyway.
Yeah.
Let's do a roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
All right, no further discussion. Let us move on to a roll call vote, Wendy.
Thank you, Councilmember Art.
I.
Councilmember Keisler.
Hi.
Councilmember Lukeyezy.
Hi.
Mayor Brian.
Hi.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Like Peter says, I think we're all safe now.
All right, now we'll move into future agenda item discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
As promised to the public earlier, I would like to put on the agenda for the next meeting that us as a council can discuss the possibilities of opening up Dunsborough to some, if not all, events. How that RE Railroad Day, Steampunk, the Chimpals Music in the Mountains, the Brew Fest, all the events that promote Dunsborough and our economic vitality. I, I was hoping that we could put that on the next agenda to discuss.
Um.
With that discussion?
Yeah, I'm also supportive of that. I think that's a good thing, even if it's a preliminary discussion about what would trigger us to allow it or not allow it, given what's ahead. Are there any other future agenda items to bring up at this point?
Councilmember Art has his hand up.
Yes, Councilmember Art.
Well, I don't know if it needs to be agendized, but I do want to repeat what I said earlier in my comments that I think the listening session, we talked about it at our last meeting between the businesses in Dunsborough and the leaders of the city of Dunsborough needs to be scheduled so that everyone has noticed. It's a meaningful and well-organized session. And I just can't emphasize how difficult the environment is for small businesses throughout California, but especially rural California and counties that are in purple tears. So I hope we give that opportunity to our business community sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Peter, you had mentioned new businesses and some people from Mount Shasta. May I inquire who they are, what business?
I'm on the cusp of entering a lease for the now empty Dough Hook Bakery with a woman from Mount Shasta that wants to open a healthy food bakery-based business. And if you look in the lower level of the bank building at 4100 Pine, you will see that my new tenant has demolished the grow rooms and is trying to work up a collective space. She has several sub-tenants, vintage clothing, remade furniture, silk screening, all locals and all excited to be part of Dunsborough's economy.
Boy, that sure is some good news. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Quick, we will be bringing the mid-year budget adjustment to the next meeting for city council consideration. So we'll have that as well.
Okay, and that will be probably quite a bit to go through. I had one question to bring up. Not that it needs to go on the next agenda, it just needs to be kept in mind. And perhaps finance committee is already discussing it. But loan committee was a big recommendation when it comes to say keeping compliant with some of the federal grants. At least that's how the auditor represented it to us. Is that something that city council should take on in the next, say, two to three meetings?
Well, the way I read it, loan committee was still the mayor. That's you, sir.
Well, it is. It's just, we've been working on clarification. Perhaps actually city manager, you could step in. I think you were thinking about doing some research as to how we would best structure it to meet all its obligations.
So, yeah, so for CDG.
And it's more just how to treat it as a topic, whether you could come back with a staff report on loan committee or I know you have a lot of info to share on it, but since it's not on the agenda, we should probably hold off on the actual discussion.
You know, we've been told that we're quote-unquote, whatever this means, sent a contract on the front of the response one and we're imminent on our funds. So at that point, we've got to set up a loan committee. And, you know, on loan committees I've, I've sat on, it's typically somebody from the Economic Development Agency, the loan underwriter, somebody from one or two people that are city staff. And, you know, and it also can include a council member on there. That, that's optional and if that's desired, that's great. But, you know, having the underwriter and the economic development person, the underwriter to make sure that the loan is collateralized, everything's in good shape, and the economic development person to kind of pour over the business plan and provide guidance, but also just, you know, for procedural matters, city staff. And then, you know, the knowledge, specialized knowledge of city staff, AKA redevelopment, to weigh in on whether the mix is right, whether the, you know, the business plan is right. And, and the same thing with collateralization.
Thank you. That's really great information. But as, as far as treating it as a future agenda item, is that something you'd recommend us waiting until we get those loans and then developing something or perhaps working in the next? You know, what timeframe do you see for putting that on the agenda?
What I want to hear is that we're imminent on a new one. And so in other words, it's coming in two or three weeks. And, and then so whether that's a week or two weeks before we actually get something in-house and can set it up, that's when I bring the proposal to council and make sure everything, everybody thinks it's.
And if that's the case, I can just defer until you think it's time and we'll, we'll bring it up when it's appropriate.
Are we going to be bringing back the solid waste contract discussion at the next meeting?
Yeah. He said he was.
Okay, okay, yeah, so.
That's time-sensitive. They got to come back in the next.
Yeah, I was going to say between special events, solid waste discussion and mid-year budget adjustment, we've got three pretty, pretty gnarly items for the next.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and that doesn't even count what could come up in the next two weeks, so.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Knock on wood right now. Knock on wood.
All right, oh, it could be good things, Big Dave, that come up in the next week. Hopefully there's good things regarding my spray. Thank you again for the hopeful news on that. Is there, I think we have plenty for the next agenda, but if there's anything more, bring it up now.
Before, before I make a motion to adjourn, I just would like to reiterate that phone number for everybody to call the Dunsborough Clinic to get vaccinated. It'll be up on our website. Please call, get the shot.
All right, thank you, Big Dave.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Ayes.
Aye. Against? Motion carries unanimously.
Feel better, Bruce.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Ahmed, if you see this, call me. 925-9365. We'll see if that worked. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.